Good evening and welcome to the Pasco City Council Meeting. The city thanks you for attending and being part of our city government. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table and the detailed package, agenda package is available on the city of Pasco's website. City council meetings are televised live on Spectrum Cable, channel one ninety-one in Pasco and Richland, and are streamed on the city's Facebook page and YouTube channel. Please silence all mobile and other electronic devices during the meeting so that they don't interrupt. And the council asked any, uh, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak during the visitors section or during a scheduled item such as a, of the agenda, to sign in prior to the meeting, which I have here. Uh, and on the sheet next to agendas, print your name clearly. Include the sections, uh, the section of meeting you plan to speak under and the topic you wish to speak about. The sheet will give me, um, be, be given to me to use to call the speaker forward. And with that, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll call.
Alvarado.
Present.
Brajas is absent.
Absent today.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Milm.
Here.
Roach.
Present.
And Serrano.
Present.
Great. And if you'd all rise to, for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Let's see here, and next we go to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Three A, so the approval of the meeting minutes. To approve the minute, the minutes of the Pasco City Council meeting held on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty, and workshop held on the February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Bills and communications to approve claims in the total amount of three million nine hundred thirty-seven thousand eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Item C, public records and policy updates to approve the resolution number three nine four three, updating the city of Pasco's public records policy. And with that, if somebody would like to make a mo-, if there's nobody that has anything they want to remove from the agenda, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, there's been a, a motion that's been seconded. Uh, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Serrano.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Milm.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
And Martinez.
Yes. Right? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Go to item four, proclamations and acknowledgements, none listed. Now, visitors, uh, other than agenda items, we've kind of went through the process on, uh, if one of you would like to speak, we give three minutes to the public. If they would like to share something that's not already on the agenda item. And the first one I see here is Kristen Egbrecht?
Egbrecht.
Egbrecht. If you would like to come up, please, and state your name and address for the record and share what you have.
Hi, my name is Kristen Egbrecht. I live on Reserve Lane in Pasco. Um, good evening. Tonight, I just wanted to thank you for holding the three city workshops about the new shelter. Um, it's been a, a few weeks, I know, but I haven't had a chance to come up here and personally thank you guys, so I wanted to do that. Um, the insightful questions you asked are some of the exact questions I was quickly writing down as Zach presented his slides. It was such a relief to know we were on the same page. We are grateful that you all support us and that so much of the community supports us as well. We are thankful for what you've done and continue to do to help build this new shelter. Thank you.
Wow. That feels good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now, if there's nobody else that would like to speak, um, on this, anything other than agenda item, we'll move right along. Thank you very much for that. Uh, to reports from committees and, and or officers, anybody have anything they would like to report tonight?
I went to Community Action Connections, uh, meeting on Thursday, went well. Um, we're just, uh, they are updating their management policies and procedures and so just learning a lot from that board.
Perfect. Thank you. Dave?
Uh, yeah, on Thursday, I also attended the TRIDEC meeting with, uh, Carl Dye, the new, uh, president there, and it was really good. And he was talking about reaching out to the different chambers. And I did remind him that we'd like to reach out to the Pasco Chamber and Hispanic Chamber, and he said he was gonna do that, so it was real good.
Perfect. Thank you. I would, I would like to share, um, last Friday, my kids really love this because anytime it has to do with food, they think I'm all over it. Uh, but we, I got to, uh, participate in the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new Wendy's on the north end of Road sixty-eight. And I had a halibut, uh, meal there and it was, it was very good. I, I meant the fish sandwiches. So, so anyway, uh, the, the staff and the management there, uh, very respectable. Um, wonderful organization and there was a lot of excitement going on there, a lot of activity. So, we're really excited for Wendy's coming in and for all the other little businesses that, not little, but other businesses that are coming in, uh, at north side of Road sixty-eight, so that was wonderful. The other thing I'd like to share is the groundbreaking ceremony that we had for the new fire station uh, over by the water towers. And we had a pretty nice, uh, represent, or, uh, we had some, quite a bit of representation there and the contractors who have worked very hard and the staff and everybody who was just excited to get that project started. Uh, I was the only one heavy enough to get the shovel and the grass. Uh, but, uh, but again, it was very fun and, uh, very exciting because what I got to share with them a little bit is I've lived in this area most of my life, all my life, actually, and just twenty years ago, that was just all farmland. And to go in and see the excitement of these new businesses going in and how new everything is and how excited people are for being and having these amenities, uh, it was, it's, it's just a great thing. And, um, and to have a new fire station there is gonna be, uh, is gonna bring more, uh, excitement and just more good things to that part of town. And it's gonna be able to respond to, uh, for emergency services in a manner that, that's gonna improve our fire, fire ratings and our fire system. So, uh, thank you, chief, for that, and that was, it was a good event. All right? If nobody else has anything, we'll move right along. Uh, we have, um, the, a presentation tonight from the COVID-dash-nineteen, COVID-nineteen, presentation by Dr. Amy Person that's gonna make a presentation tonight. And if you would like to come up and, and share with us, appreciate it. Thank you for being here.
Sure. Um, and this'll just be a verbal presentation, uh, with the, uh, rapidly changing information that, you know, we continue to get. Uh, if I had time to do presentations, it would likely be out of date by the time I have arrived there. Um, but I am glad to have this opportunity to kind of come, uh, and, uh, share what we know so far because I think it's important that people are aware but not panicked. COVID-nineteen is a disease that's caused by a novel coronavirus. Um, so the, you know, why we're paying attention to it, it's not that this is some super virus, you know, that can do things that no other virus can do. Uh, the challenge with this virus is that it is new, which means that none of us have immunity to it. Um, you know, normally, uh, if we're exposed to a viral infection, you know, we get varying degrees of sick and then we get immunity and then we get better. This virus is new, so nobody has immunity to it yet. And so that's the main concern is that, uh, when it comes to an area, everyone who's exposed is likely gonna get infected. Um, the good news, if there is good news that I can put with this, is that, um, as we continue to learn more about this virus, it looks like the vast majority of people who get it will not get that sick. They'll get a mild, um, illness like a cold or a mild flu, and then they'll recover on their own. They won't need to take special medicine, uh, they won't need to be hospitalized. Um, the challenge is that some people, um, may develop more severe disease. Uh, these people seem to be the same people that are at risk for more severe disease from influenza. So, people that are elderly, um, and people who have underlying health problems. And so that's why we're really, uh, paying very close attention to it. If this disease was just like a bad cold for everyone, um, even if it was brand new, we, we wouldn't need to focus on it so much. Um, but because there's the potential that many people could get sick over a very short period of time and that some of them could get more sick, and as we know from the experience in Seattle, some people may die from this. The people that have died from this in Seattle, um, again, were people with underlying health problems, um, and the elderly. Uh, because unfortunately, one of the areas where they had an outbreak was a long-term care facility. Um, and, you know, I think we've been seeing a lot of the things in the news that I think are also, um, probably making people more afraid than they necessarily need to be. I think when there are stories about, uh, you know, a casino gets closed and goes through a deep cleaning, schools get closed and go through deep cleanings. Um, I want everyone to understand, you know, those are actions that are being taken by those establishments because they, they feel that that's what they need to, to do to demonstrate that they are taking this problem seriously. There, these are not cleanings that they're being, uh, directed by public health that they have to do. Again, this is not, this is not a super virus. So, it's passed the same way that many respiratory viruses are, uh, which is by coughing and sneezing. So, um, you know, the, the main way you can avoid it is, you know, try to stay away from people who are coughing or sneezing. Um, but, you know, if somebody coughs or sneezes on a, on a surface, um, it's not like, uh, we have to use any special products on that surface. The same things we recommend that people use, uh, to clean surfaces after, you know, during flu season, um, will work. Uh, so there, it wasn't in a public health necessity that those facilities closed, but we can certainly understand that out of their level of concern, they felt that's what they, they needed to do. Um, you know, really, the main thing that, um, if anything, I could impart to how we need the public to help us and how we need, um, businesses, local governments, everyone to help us is that we need people to stay home when they're sick. Um, we need them to stay home from work. We need them to stay home from school. Um, at this time, we don't have the capacity to test everybody who might be sick with any kind of respiratory infection to decide whether they have COVID-nineteen or something else. Testing at this point is really being reserved for the people who are, uh, needing to be hospitalized because those are the environments we need to make sure that we are properly isolating um, and that healthcare providers are using all of the necessary precautions they need because they're gonna be the ones at highest risk. Um, so what we need people to do is, yeah, if you're sick, stay home from work or school. If you're an employer, um, you know, look at what your sick policies are. Don't have policies that punish people for staying home when they're sick. Um, don't have policies that say, in order to come back to work, you need a note from a doctor proving you were sick. We are trying to keep people that are mildly ill out of the emergency rooms, out of the doctors' offices, um, so that we, one, don't overwhelm our medical system with people that don't need that level of medical care. Um, and, uh, two, we also, again, don't want lots of people who may potentially get sick to be out there exposing other people. We don't have any cases, um, in Benton Franklin Counties. We don't have any persons under investigation. Um, but I do believe we will see, um, confirmed cases here. Uh, it is, in all honesty, likely that there are people walking around with this virus here in this community right now. They're likely the ones that are not very sick or maybe not, you know, they may have a very mild cold, so they don't think anything of it. Um, that's been both the good and the bad thing about this particular virus. Um, we've had other novel viruses in the past, some of them which have fatality rates, um, that are close to fifty percent. Um, so in terms of those viruses, um, it's very easy to tell who has it because they get very sick and many of them die. When you have a virus like, um, this novel coronavirus where most of the people aren't gonna get very sick, um, it's good in terms of we don't have as many bad outcomes, but it makes it harder to, to really control it because there are likely a lot of people who've been exposed and a lot of people who are gonna acquire it in the community that aren't that sick. Um, so really, the best thing that we can really do to try to control it um, is to have people who are sick, um, staying home so that they're not exposing others. The State Department of Health can now do testing and so it is likely, um, that we will be able to start testing more, which means we probably will be able to do some surveillance in the community to really tell what our levels of the infection are. Um, there are also, um, University of Washington is now able to do some testing. So, that is gonna ramp up the number of tests we're gonna do. Um, but there's not gonna be enough tests to do two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people, uh, in Benton Franklin Counties. There's not gonna be that level of testing, and we don't need that level of testing. If you have a mild illness, you're going to get over it the same way you get over all mild respiratory illnesses. So, um, if you can help us all out by not, um, going to school or work when you're sick and not potentially exposing others, um, that's really gonna be, I think, our best way of keeping this under control. Um, we are trying to, you know, make sure that we continue to push out information which, you know, changes. The more we learn about this infection, you know, the more we understand, um, how it operates. And so, I'll be honest, what I'm telling, some of what I'm telling you now may change in tomorrow or the day after, you know, as we learn more. But I, I do want people to understand, you know, this is a virus, so it's not, you know, a, a super virus that has properties unlike any other virus. We can understand some of the general things about it. Uh, parts that we're learning new about it are exactly, you know, what is the likelihood that, um, you know, when you're exposed, how close do you need to be? If you're sick, you know, how long are you contagious? Some of those details. Um, we don't know all of that information yet. So, that's why, again, we want people to be aware, uh, but not scared because they know what to do, um, as far as taking care of themselves and their families. It's the same thing we tell everybody flu season. They usually ignore us because nobody's that worried about flu because it comes around every year and most people don't have problems with it. But those same things that we talk about, stay home when you're sick, wash your hands well, so not the three seconds, run the tips of your fingers under the water because you don't wanna get your rings wet and you don't wanna get your cuffs wet, but, you know, twenty seconds of scrubbing front and back of your hands in between your fingers is really the best thing you can do, and do that a lot. You know, every time you're touching surfaces before you, excuse me, before you, um, eat, after you've been outside, try to avoid touching your face because the way people get this infection is either, um, they inhale the droplets that somebody coughed or sneezed on them, or somebody coughs or sneezes on a surface. You touch it and then you touch your face. If you just touch it and then you wash your hands, you're not gonna pass it to yourself. So, there are very simple things that people can do, but, um, sometimes they're not so easy. It's not so easy to remember to wash your hands all the time and it's not always so easy, um, to not go to work when you're sick. Um, so that's where I think all of us kind of working together to make it easier for the people who are sick, um, to stay home like we'd like them to do, uh, will be important. Questions?
Well, thank you very much. Any questions? I, I, go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate you, you bringing some more delight and putting it into context and perspective. Um, one thing I've seen, a, a number of folks, I believe even, uh, fairly high officials, um, in government suggesting that stay away from big public gatherings and things like that. Do you have something that you can share with us about, about, about that at this point in time, knowing what we know?
Sure. I mean, I, I think, um, for where we are in this, um, we're not quite there yet. Um, you know, when we look at, uh, non-pharmaceutical interventions for controlling epidemics and pandemics, where we start is usually with what I'm telling you now, which is, you know, having people who are sick stay home, uh, you know, having people, you know, try to avoid being around others who are sick. Um, as we see, uh, infection rates start to increase, um, then we will usually start to look at those next measures, which are canceling events, um, you know, closing schools or closing other things. In Washington, I'm, I think even on the west side, we're really not there yet. But in, highly possible, we'll get to that point. So, I think it's important for people to know that those would be the next steps that we'd be taking. Um, but, yeah, I don't think we're, we're here at, at this point. Um, and I know we've gotten calls about, um, you know, events that are coming up in the next few days. And at this point, for those events in our area, we don't see a reason they need to be canceled. Um, you know, messaging we would do to people holding those events is really try to push, you know, don't come to this if you're sick. Um, you know, it's not gonna be worth the, whatever, fifty dollars, two hundred dollars, whatever you paid to, to register, even if you lose that, that's not gonna be worth going someplace when you're sick and, and potentially exposing lots of people. So, I think that's the kind of messaging that we need to get out.
Thank you so much.
Well, I sure appreciate you coming over and, uh, I guess one of the questions that I have, so that we don't inundate the hospitals unnecessarily, can you give us an idea of what point maybe somebody should go in to get checked?
Um, you know, really, when we're, we're talking about somebody who, um, needs to get checked, and again, you know, this, I'm just speaking about, uh, COVID-nineteen, so, you know, obviously, if you have other, other medical issues that, you know, you need to deal with, you know, you wanna follow your guidance with that. Um, but we really, again, are talking about the same things which would be at the point where we'd say, you know, is this somebody who's going to need, uh, supplemental oxygen? Is this somebody who's gonna need, you know, additional respiratory support? So, if you're home and you've got a fever and a cough, sore throat, yeah, you can stay home. If you find you are starting to have difficulty breathing, you know, now all of a sudden, you can't walk across the room without getting short of breath, um, tho- that would be the time you'd really wanna be seen for this. Um, because again, um, the progress of this infection for people who are going to get sick, you know, it makes sense. So, people aren't gonna go from, I'm walking around fine to, you know, I dropped dead from COVID-nineteen. That, that is not what we're seeing. We're seeing people who are sick get progressively sicker. Uh, so, yeah, I would wait, you know, again, if you're having difficulty breathing, um, or, um, that level of sickness, that's when we'd want you, um, to go to the emergency room.
Well, thank you very much for coming and sharing. Uh, I know and I really want this, to communicate this to our public. I mean, the school district has sent out messages. Um, we're hoping that, we have a website, Mr. Zabel, can you confirm that? We have a place on the website where you can go to to get information, uh, to call the health district. Is that correct, Mr. Zabel?
We, we are for, linking to the health district, yeah.
So, we, we just, uh, you know, instead of getting scared, just get informed, uh, just do the right thing. All over where I work, on the Hanford side, it's, it's very, uh, communicated very well. So, just want the public to know that, uh, you know, let's not get scared, let's get informed, let's take care of this and let's do the things that you're, you're suggesting and, uh, and consider those, make sure we stay home. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, one of our council members was not feeling very well, so she decided to stay. And by all means, uh, that's the right thing to do, so.
Yes, absolutely.
So, again, uh, the Benton Franklin Health District is a good resource to, to find that information and, uh...
Yes, yeah, we, we try to, um, update our posts on that. Um, the State Department of Health has a, you know, call-in line for people who have questions. Um, now, today, they had a lot of issues, I, I think, because, um, again, the, the situation in, in King County sort of changed very dramatically over the last forty-eight hours. Uh, so I think they were being a little bit inundated, so, uh, yeah, people may need to be, uh, a little bit patient. But, yeah, I think people need to understand, uh, you know, people that aren't that sick, uh, even people who were at, uh, Wild Horse Casino or, you know, other places where they've heard, uh, this was, they, they don't need to be tested for COVID-nineteen, uh, just because they were in those places. They don't need to stay home just because they were in those places unless they get sick. If they get sick with, uh, you know, fever, cough, um, those kind of symptoms, they need to stay home.
Well, thank you very much.
All right.
I'd also like to share that, uh, our, our emergency response organizations have, Mr. Gear, anything you wanna share on? I know they've had some extra training in the event that something must, uh, occur locally.
Well, eh, again, and we've spent a lot of time today talking to people about that and trying to get a, a good, consistent message out. The, the, really, the bottom line is it's the universal precautions we should be taking all winter in the flu season anyway so that our people aren't getting sick. Uh, it's the glasses on, it's the washing their hands, disinfecting the medic unit afterwards. Um, the problem we're gonna see, uh, is a real shortage of supplies. If, if we had to start using N-ninety-five masks, as an example, um, we've got maybe a week or two worth of masks that we normally stock based on what we normally use. And right now, they're like on a three-month back order. So, we're not gonna get more masks, so we can't tell our guys, wear a mask on every call you go to. Um, you know, you need to screen that call. If, if it seems like a flu symptom, send one person in with a mask on first to see what's going on. Don't send a whole three or four-person crew in there, things like that. Um, I had a lot of concern when I saw the thing that happened at Kirkland with, you know, uh, quarantining twenty-four firefighters off a shift and closing a station. And I'm like, holy cow, I, how would we do that? But we, it was discussed in a meeting we had today, and I don't think that's the right reaction. We don't quarantine them every time they haul a flu patient. Um, I don't think it's appropriate that we're gonna quarantine them every time they haul, uh, a patient with a respiratory distress that may be, um, a Corona. Eh, it's, we have to be careful just to use those universal precautions and do the right thing, and I think we'll be fine. Um, some of them are gonna get sick, um, I think. It, it's probably gonna happen. And some of them get sick from the flu every year from, uh, but they're probably at much risk from their kids coming home from school with something as they are on a call, so.
Right, and I think that's absolutely true. I mean, you know, in, in this state alone, you know, we've had far more flu, influenza-related deaths than we have had from, from COVID-nineteen. So, yeah, I mean, that is one of the things we have been working very closely, not just with our healthcare community, but also with our, um, emergency partners. Um, and there are some resources for, for masks through the, the state once we have, um, exhausted our local resources. But, um, Chief Gear is absolutely, uh, correct that we need to look at how we are using them. I suspect we are moving now from this phase of, can we completely stop this? No. So, now we're gonna really move to the phase to, again, how do we slow the progression so that we don't have disruption, major disruptions of things? And I think that is gonna mean we are, we'll change from this automatic quarantining. We, probably not quite there yet, but I wouldn't be surprised if we see that changing within the next, uh, few days.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that information. And again, it's a, to quickly, possibly changing information we're gonna get, so that just stay tuned and, uh, and, and use these practices that we should be using.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Person. All right. And the next on the agenda would be the General Fund Monthly Report. Uh, Mr. Signal, do you think you'd like to share?
We're still on track, but unless council has any questions, I'm...
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, Ms. Signal, um, so, could you just remind me, on, on the very last page of this, there's a, uh, discussion of the contracts and purchases over a hundred thousand dollars and less than three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
And a number of these, of course, are contracts that were originally left for significantly higher than that threshold and then that we're just looking at the change orders. Could you remind me of, of what, is there a threshold of a total amount of change orders that has to occur before it comes back to council? Is there a threshold like that? Um, any other practices of that, of that nature?
Um, Mr. Woolley is shaking his head, so I will, I will let him answer since most of the change orders come from the public works.
Yes, uh, the change order authority that, uh, council has given is the city manager has authority up to three hundred thousand or fifteen percent of the original contract amount, whichever is less. And then the Public Works Director has authority up to fifty thousand or fifteen percent, whichever is less. And so, uh, I hope that answers your question.
So, cumulatively, if there's multiple changeovers over change orders for a large project, does it hit, if it hits a certain threshold cumulatively, does that come back to council? Or is it just, uh, stepwise, um, each time is, is considered individually?
It is cumulative up to the limits that are described.
Thank you.
All right. All right, well, thank you very much. And we'll move right along. The hearing and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. We have a public hearing that is open.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We have a public hearing that is currently open.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
And you just need to recall it from the table.
And so we just need a.
You, you can just reopen it with the, with the gavel, but it, it has, it's just been continued from the previous.
Continue, so we're reopening this hearing, Mr. Woolley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As most of you may recall, we opened a public hearing for the Northwest Sewer LID. And, uh, we wanted to, uh, gather some more information, work with the property owners. And so at the February third council meeting, council approved to continue the public hearing until tonight, giving us an opportunity. And so tonight, we plan to open the public hearing and allow comments to be heard. And then at the end of the public hearing, uh, pass a motion for, assuming that it all goes okay, for the formation of the LID. So.
Alright, any questions? So.
I have a question.
Oh, you, Miss, Miss Roach.
So, I, I live near here, and I was wondering, um, I saw excavators on the property around segment one, and looks like they've started on some type of work. So, oh, how does that comply or not comply with this?
Okay, um, I, I have a little presentation that I was gonna give, but I didn't know if the motion needed to be read first before the presentation to open the public hearing.
Either way, uh, currently you're in, uh, the, you're in the public hearing phase, so this would be when you would take your testimony, and then if, uh, depending on how you wanna proceed with that, if you wanna, uh, do the, uh, presentation, you can do it at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead and.
We'll go ahead with the presentation.
Presentation, yes.
And so what we wanted to do is to share with you the information that we received back from the property owners. Um, and so, as you recall, uh, this was the original plan that was submitted with the LID formation information previously. It was a schematic layout on the sewer alignment, and it showed all of the parcels that were part of the proposed LID. Uh, the information about that that was presented previously is shown there on the side. And, um, we wanted to be able to get additional information from the property owners, and so we sent out notices, and we held two meetings, uh, on February fourth and on February eighteenth. And during that meeting, we proposed, we looked at this same map, and we talked to everybody about, you know, is this the best alignment? Is there another alignment that would serve more properties? How, what's the best way to do this? And so, we had some great information initially prepared by our consultant, RH Two Engineering. They did a real good deep dive look at all the different ways of looking at how to assess the property. They took the two-foot contour data that the city has for the entire city, and they, they mapped out a route for the sewer that could still flow by gravity, and how each of the properties could be served, and we came up with a preliminary alignment, and we presented that at the first meeting, had a discussion with all the property owners, and we had some great conversations, some great ideas from everybody, and they said, well, how about if we move the line over here? Uh, what if, what if this assessment method was different? We looked at five different assessment methods and said, which one of these makes more sense? If we go this route, these people seem to pay more and these pay less, but if we do this route, then it'll be the opposite. And they said, well, take all of our comments back, come up with a different, better alignment based on our comments, and come back to us with a hybrid of the assessment method, taking into account all the comments that we heard. And so, uh, the consultant and staff did that, and two weeks later, we came back to them again with a different plan. And that plan is this one right here, and I wanted to point out several issues with this plan, and I thought I had a pointer of some kind. Does this show up? Oh, okay, and so what you'll see is this is significantly different than the original alignment. Some key things that I'll point out is, you'll see that the segment between, uh, numbers three and four is gone now. That was one of the items that was talked about, what, let's not include that in the LID, let's let the developers of those properties do it. They could probably do it cheaper than we could through the LID process. You'll notice that there are eight parcels now instead of six, 'cause one of them, the pink ones, six, seven, and eight, was subdivided during this process. So we've included those now. You can see that we've pushed the sewer alignment as far west as we possibly can. And what that does is it allows us to be able to serve the maximum amount of property that we possibly can, get it right over to the edge of that, uh, s- gravel pit that is currently being operated right now. And very faintly, you can see there's kind of an underlying road layout underneath it. We tried to follow that with the sewer line, with the idea being that there has been some preliminary work on the development of that property, so we wanted to match and coordinate with that as well. And you will see the dashed line from, uh, property number two, uh, over to the sewer line, that is a forced main line. That property number two and the hashed area that you see right here, just to the west of segment D, those areas cannot gravity flow to the sewer pipeline, they will have to gravity flow to a lift station, and then that lift station will pump it back up into this line. So there is still a benefit to those property owners for this sewer as part of the LID. And then the segments A and B that you see up here, uh, that, that, some of that is going to be finalized during the final design. We have options in which way to go. We're gonna work with the developers on it and find out which is the best way to go, but we wanna make sure that we get all of those properties served. And so where we show it kind of a dashed line, we may take a route up that low point to get up to, uh, property number five. Uh, and so we'll be working on that, uh, further. Part of the reason that we moved segment D over farther to the west is to get around that, uh, wet area that's there. There's, that's the end of the, uh, SCBID, the South Columbia Basin Irrigation District's, uh, irrigation water, and that's a very wet area. We don't wanna run the sewer pipe through that area, so we wanted to go around it as much as we could. So, the details of the proposal now, uh, prepared by RH Two is that we've got eight parcels, ownerships, we've got nine hundred acres total, eight hundred and forty-four serviceable, which is much greater than it was before under the previous alignment. Uh, there's five segments, all of it can be, most of it can be served by gravity. Um, we do have the ability to increase the pipe sizes to account for flows from developments that are further to the north or to the east or the west that might come down through this LID, and the city would be responsible for any increased costs in oversizing that pipe for flows that are outside of this LID. The assessment method that we came up with and decided upon was a mix of looking at the flow characteristics from each of the properties based on the land use of that property, and then also looked at the, uh, frontage of this force, of the sewer main on each property. And we weighted that a little bit with a higher priority slightly to the flow contribution, thinking that that is what causes the cost to go up more because of the higher flows, the larger pipe sizes, proportionally just a little bit higher. One of the things you'll notice is, uh, the note there that we did provide a fifty percent reduction to parcels two and, and five on the frontage issue, because typically they, they are not fronting the sewer main directly. They are offset by another property, and so we reduced their frontage calculation by fifty percent because they don't front it directly. And so, um, with that, we came up with this proposed preliminary assessment. Now, keep in mind that these numbers are based on the original cost estimate that we came to you previously with. We have not updated the cost estimate. We didn't have time, we don't have enough information to get into any more detail. So we used the same cost estimate, but just use the assessment proportions to apply that cost estimate to each property accordingly. And we believe that this cost estimate is conservative, and once we get into the design, we will nail this down tighter and tighter, and we think it will come in less than this. Uh, we presented this information to the property owners, and I'm happy to say that five out of the eight property owners are represented here tonight. And so we're glad to see them tonight. I, I just think it was a great meeting that we had. Uh, it was a good, open discussion, good ideas coming from everybody. And then with that, this is the schedule that we have from, uh, that we've done so far, and how we plan to move forward if, uh, the LID gets formed this evening. And so that's the plan for this evening, is to pass an ordinance for the formation based on this information. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Mr. Sharone.
Thank you. So unrelated to the LID, but what I caught from you was, uh, parcel two will eventually require a lift station.
Correct.
Um, can you just kinda speak to that as far as, uh, I mean, would we assess the pros- property with that? Would the city be on hold for that, some combination? Again, I understand that doesn't directly relate to the ID, but thinking ahead.
Yeah, um, right now, the property, uh, owners, developers of number two recognize that in order to serve their development, that particular property right now is the only one in the LID that has an approved preliminary plat. And they know already that in order to serve that plat, they have to have a lift station, and they're aware of that. We are looking to partner with that developer to possibly enlarge that lift station to serve not just their property, but to serve other properties in and around that area, and we would go in with them on that. You bet.
So my question earlier was, now that the map has changed, it would possibly be, um, s- the number eight and number four, it looks like there's some excavators on that land, and wanting to know, um, are those there to start work and, and what are they doing?
Okay, as I understand it, what I saw recently is that there has been a grading plan submitted to the city for, I believe it's all three lots, six, seven, and eight, so there is a mass grading effort that is gonna take place on those properties to get some of those sand dunes knocked down. I believe that might be what you're referring to. I don't think any utility work or anything like that has started on any of those.
No, no, I just saw the excavators, so I was wondering, and it was coming before us, thought they were preemptively out there working.
Nope.
So.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Mr. Woolley, I, I appreciate the, uh, the partnership with the, uh, with the property owners. That, that sounds like it's a, it's a great model, and I hope we, uh, we continue to do, do more of that, of, of, of less of us working in a vacuum and, and more of us as partnerships. I, I know we're moving in that direction, so I take that as a positive, not a, uh, not a criticism. So when we were talking about the Riverview area and the potential sewer lift station for that East Basin, uh, one of the things we talked about was late come or fees, um, as one of the po- potential ways of helping fund that project. Are those mutually exclusive with an LID? Or, um, would other properties hooking up to the line down the line, um, pay a portion of the upsizing that needs to be done for this area? How, how, how does that work for folks who are not directly part of this LID but are going to benefit very directly from both the LID work here and the city's upsize?
The way that we envision it at the moment is that, to, well, first off, to answer your question, yes, they are kind of, uh, mutually exclusive. So the folks in the developments that are in this particular LID will pay just the LID cost. And then if the city decides through our sewer, sewer comprehensive planning efforts to bring additional flows down through this LID, and we increase the pipe size, then likely there will be some kind of additional charge to any future developer that would then send their flows through this.
Excellent, so both, um, but only the portion that we, uh, with the late come or fees would associate with would be just the portion that the city is covering that is exclusive from the LID from the, that the property owners are paying for.
I believe, yes, I believe that is correct. The idea would be we would not have any additional fees on top of the LID property owners for that.
Yes, yes, um, so what I, what I just wanted to make sure I understood is, um, in general, we've, we've had a lot of discussions about growth paying for growth, and people, you know, in essence, uh, developers paying their own way, so to speak, um, new people coming to our city shouldn't be, um, necessarily spreading the cost to folks, for example, that are well-established in the community. And so I wanted to understand a bit more about how the dynamics might work in the future post this LID as we, um, as we continue to, uh, develop that area, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Well, okay, should know the questions, we currently have a public hearing open. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this item? Alright, I see no one else, um, this is the second call for comments related to this public meeting. And I have the third and final call for public comments regarding this topic. Alright, I'm gonna close this public hearing, and I will now ask for a motion from Mr. Maloney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will ease into this, um, this marathon. I move to adopt ordinance number four, four, eight, three, relating to the improvements of a new sanitary sewer trunk line and other sewer improvements in the city's northwest, uh, Broadmoor area, collectively the improvements. Ordering the improvements of approximately twelve thousand linear, linear feet of new trunk sewer piping consistent with resolution number three, nine, three, two, establishing local improvement district number one fifty-one, and ordering the, the carrying out of the proposed improvements, providing that the payment of the, for the improvements being made by special assessment upon the property in the district payable by the mode of payment by bonds, and providing for the issuance and sale of local improvement district warrants redeemable in cash or other sort term financing, and local improvement district bonds, and further authorized publication by summary only.
There's been a mo- well done, Mr. Maloney. There's been a motion, and, and Mrs. Rocha is seconding the motion. So with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No, it's not, well, at least it's not signed real. So let's try it once again. So there's been a motion, it's been seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes unanimously. Mr. Woolley, thank you very much, and thank you very much to the contractors who, uh, have a big part in this, and, uh, looking forward to, to having this put in. Thank you very much. Next, next we go to ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. So we have Sandy Heights RV Park LLC rezone, and that would be. Uh, Mr. White?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This rezone request involves a five acre, five acre site just north of Chapel Hills Boulevard and just west of Road eighty-four. The site is currently vacant, although there are a number of, uh, RVs stored on site currently. The applicant intends to expand the RV park that exists, uh, immediately east of the site. And, uh, if this zone change were approved, that would, uh, occur through a special permit application to the Pasco Hearing Examiner. The Hearing Examiner did conduct a public hearing on the rezone request, uh, just a few weeks ago, and has forwarded a recommendation of approval to city council.
Okay, is there any comment, uh, or questions by the council?
I just have a question, uh, Mr. White, about the business that is either, uh, adjacent to this, the, in the C one or the C three. I know it's a newer business, right in front of the new roundabout there. It looks like it has bays, but I'm, I'm not familiar with what it was. I was curious if you could tell me about what that is and who, yeah, who operates the business there and what they're doing.
The, uh, develop, the developer was the owner of the RV site, uh, just to the west of this rezone site, and he currently has, uh, the space leased to three or four individual tenants.
Okay, and they're just, uh, like retail or?
Um.
Is it the C one location, or is it that C three parcel on, on here?
No, it's, it's a C three, uh, location, the bright red, and it was, uh, um, I'm trying to remember the date, it was maybe a year ago, council considered a reasonable request through a concomitant agreement for that parcel. So it's a, a light C three, if you will.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Um, I move to adopt ordinance number four, four, eight, four, rezoning a parcel located at the eighty-two-hundred block of Chapel Hill Boulevard from CR to C one, and further authorized publication by summary only.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Uh, seconded by Mr. Millen. Uh, so there's a motion to approve, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Pasco Public Facilities District Charter amendments, uh, this would be, Mr. Reddick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, good evening. As the Pasco Public Facilities District works to draft a concept and potential ballot language for a new aquatic facility, uh, staff has identified some simple changes that are required of their charter. As a result in recent changes, I think last legislative session to state law, uh, specifically, uh, the revised code of Washington, section eight, two, point one, four, point zero, four, eight, subsection A, it is necessary to review and consider the following amendments to the, uh, charter for the Public Facilities District. Um, the proposed amendments that we see in, uh, uh, is update the notation of the most recent update to March, uh, to that of being March twenty-twenty. Uh, we also added the term recreational facilities to the purpose section in article four, which was the change that, uh, corrected. which was the change that uh correctly conforms this charter to the amendments in the RCW enacted by the legislature. And then a small Scribner's error found by legal staff uh replaced the word commissioner with council to greatly or to uh more closely match this body um in section nine point three of the charter. So this will update the P, Pasco Public Facilities District Charter to match the enabling RCW. Um, the PFD will be forthcoming over the next couple of months with a full update on their progress uh with regard to the new potential aquatic center. But tonight, uh, staff wanted to take care of some of these housekeeping issues with the charter. So this will be done through um uh ordinance four, four, eight, five for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Redke. Any question, Mr. Maloney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion. Um, I move to adopt ordinance number four, four, eight, five, amending the charter for the Pasco Public Facilities District and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's been a motion and a second by Mr. Rubin. Um. Um, yes, so all those in favor signify, oh, excuse me, Mr. Maloney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just uh, just really quickly, I've um, um, Mr. Milne and I have been attending a lot of these meetings and this is certainly one of those, one of those things. It's just alignment for to law. So we've got a lot of things in front of us. And this is the um, I, I'd say this is important, but um, but it has not functionally changed much about it. So I just wanted to make sure that was very clear. That has worked any of those meetings that this is not, this is not the big one.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. We've sure appreciate the efforts you guys are putting in uh with that Public Facilities District. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we uh go to number nine unfinished business. There's none, but we do have some new business. We have Pearl Street Lift Station Bid Award. Mr. Worley?
I will take it for Mr. Worley's talking to our LID participants.
Okay.
So, uh, council recall, we have uh, uh, Pearl, uh, re- rehabilitation, actually replacement of the Pearl Street Lift Station uh in your CIP plan and your biennial budget. And uh, that's the, and you, I remember, I know you'll recall the system cause it looks like something out of a space uh Buck Rogers movie, if you, if you recall seeing the picture from the slideshow. And uh, now that I got that clever little comment out, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to talk about the, the bidding process. So.
There's really not much to add after that. Uh, we had a bid opening on it and we had a successful bid and the bids came in less than the engineer's estimate. And we'd recommend awarding the bid to the lowest bidder.
Perfect. Uh, any question, Mr. Maloney?
I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, I just wanted to ask uh, a question about contingency. So how does it work when you get bids like this? Uh, is there a percentage that is built into the bid that is for things go haywire and costs e- exceed, exceed what they projected? Um, what is that? Does the city set that or does it, is it set by the bidder? How does that work? And who pays that?
Okay, that's a great question. The way that we typically do projects is we develop what's called a project budget. And so we evaluate or estimate what it's gonna cost to design the project, how much it's gonna cost to get the easements and the right of way to do the project. And then how much it's gonna take to build the project. Each one of those areas has multiple different line items to it. It could be interior staff, the city staff, consultants, surveyors, cultural resources people, right away agents, uh inspectors, material testing firms, all that kinda stuff. In that project budget, we build in contingencies for the project. So when we put a bid like this out, the, the contractor doesn't build a contingency into his bid. We build it into the project budget. So if the contractor runs into something, we need to pay him more. We will amend his contract to add that extra work to it and we'll pay for it from the contingency we built into the project budget.
Thank you.
An explanation. Thank you very much. This is Serrano before you put the motion up.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Um, is CNE a local firm? Or are, were, do we know if any of the vendors were local?
I believe they're um, local, yes, and we have awarded them work recently as well. I think they did the Foster Wells Force Main work.
Okay. What's that?
They're out of Pasco.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Maloney, can you give us a motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move to award the, the bid for, for construction of the Pearl Lift Station, um Pearl Street Lift Station to CNE Trenching LLC in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty cents, including Washington State sales tax and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
There's a motion on the floor. Anybody like to second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Roach. And I uh, I, I just wanna comment that it amazes me how close the bids came. And um, and yes, and I have seen uh, CNE has been a, a long time customer of uh, we're doing work for the city of Pasco. And I, I've seen that they're a very respectable company and, and do good work. So, so yes, I uh, I'm very pleased that it's come underneath the engineering estimate and um, yeah. I like, I like what's happening here. So thank you very much. With that, there's been a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel?
Just a, a few items and uh appreciated uh, Dr. Person coming. We, we gave her a call this morning. And so she was able to pull things together and, and clear her schedule and be here tonight for us. And I think that was, that was really uh helpful. And uh, always good to hear from someone that knows what they're talking about when we're dealing with something like this. Instead of, you know, and no offense to newscasters, but they're repeating what they heard. And uh, if you heard from an expert, that's, that's a neat thing. So reason I kinda, I went in, waded into that, uh, State Emergency Operations Center is conducting a webinar geared towards elected officials on COVID nineteen this Wednesday, March fourth at ten AM. And you do have a, uh, a email uh to you from April with the details in terms of the log on and things like that. So wanted to just uh draw your attention to that. Uh, secondly, just a reminder, uh, probably more to the community. I think this is on the council's radar, but our, our second community forum, uh, seven PM this Wednesday at Happo Center. And uh, and then another piece of information, you'll be hitting a, a um, a presentation on it in the very near future. Uh, Public Works completed a local road safety plan, which is not something the city's done before. Uh, but it uh basically reviews and evaluates crash data. And we, we looked at the, looked at crash data from two thousand nine to two thousand eighteen. And you'll see some heat maps. I know that's a favorite of the councils. And we've identified and through that process identified and prioritized some intersections and corridors for us to really be focused on based on uh what those corridors and intersections are experiencing and as well as identified some safety projects. So uh, road safety plan is a requirement for us to be able to pursue uh highway safety improvement program funds, HSIP. And we've had a couple of projects in the past with that, with those kinda dollars in there, but this is a new requirement. And so it, it's had the benefit of being able to identify some, some other projects for us as well. So as I said, uh, council will probably see some in the next uh, three to five weeks on that uh, on that plan.
On that one, uh, is, does that include multi mo-, uh, multimodal uh crash, crashes or just to be?
It, it would include any kind of bike pad, multi, yeah, uh transit, yeah, any, any type of thing like that.
And those are GIS?
Yeah, and the, and these would be the on-street rightaways. Probably is not going to have the trail, for instance, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to uh, uh, bring up that uh today, uh, the Pasco Taco Crawl fifth year um, is gotten, tickets went on sale. So if you haven't had an opportunity or taken the time to uh, to go and do the Pasco Taco Crawl, it has started and um, we're already starting to get some big press like we do. So um, my wife is uh, is the one sharing it this year and she is running herself ragged today and will be for the next month and a half. So uh, please do sign up. It's awesome. It's a great way to tour Pasco and get invited into some just amazing food and, and locations that you may not think of stopping by on your own. And you get a chance to really experience a, a really, really cool part of Pasco.
Appreciate that, that fundraising organization and our activity and it's one of my favorites. Mr. Roach?
Yeah, thank you to Emily Maloney for that, but I wanted to say something that is similar to what um, council member Maloney is talking about. The Downtown Pasco Development Authority uh puts on the Cinco de Mayo Parade. And there are still opportunities for business sponsorship. Um, they have um, taken that uh Cinco de Mayo Parade from just a, a one day event to now it's three days. It involves the whole greater community. Um, they had, I think the count was up to twenty thousand uh people who attended last year. It's the largest Cinco de Mayo Parade outside of Los Angeles County. Um, so we have something to be really proud of. Um, and so it's kind of just an ask for anybody who's watching or anybody on council who wants to make the ask of business owners or organizations who would like to sponsor DPDA for that event. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Any other closing remarks? Is there gonna be a jalap, uh, one of those chili competitions again this year?
Yes, and you are going to be up there.
Mr. Zabel looks like he's.
I think that's fiery foods festival. That's fiery foods festival. But um, you know, Gabriel Portugal is the chair of the DPDA. He would be one of the people to contact. And I know Gustavo is the director, but I don't know his last name of DPDA. Um, and so there's a few spots and you get, you know, uh, well, free entry into the beer garden and, you know, full pass for the whole weekend. And so it's, it's pretty fun. And it's a lot of press and uh free marketing, uh, not free, it's not free. Um, but, but it is marketing to a very wide uh audience.
All right, thank you. With that, uh, we move right along to the executive session. There is no need for an executive session tonight, so we appreciate that. And so the next is adjourned. So this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.